Okay, we'll go ahead and call this Planning Commission meeting to order now that we're done talking about everybody's outputs. So, I don't have any public comment cards. Is anybody interested in addressing the Planning Commission? Yes?
I have a public comment to share with you all.
Okay.
That came in via email just a few minutes ago, so I'll pass that around for you. Just pass the whole stack. This is an email that is regarding some kind of neighborhood compatibility issues out in North Eugene with an affordable housing development and some nearby neighbors, so I just wanted to let you know that email came in and that staff in community development and enforcement have been aware of this issue and have been working with the neighbors and the management company to resolve it.
Thanks.
Sorry Emily, there were parking issues.
Look, here it is now. Anybody else wish to address the commission? So we'll move on to item number two, approval of minutes. Does anybody have any corrections? Those in favor?
Aye.
I abstaining, I wasn't here, so minutes approved, thank you. All right, item number three. Carolyn, Lisa?
Well, I'll just kick it off really briefly. So, as you're all aware, we just concluded, I think it was a total of three joint work sessions with the Planning Commission City Council during which time staff walked both the council and the commission through the proposal, which you should have in your packet. Looks like this, and there's a number of pillars and strategies. Today, we're not going to take the time to walk through those again since we've spent quite a bit of time doing that, but we wanted to give the Planning Commission more time to discuss and maybe make sure you understand and ask questions and hear more about it and then share your comments. It's our intention not to forward a formal recommendation, there's no request for a recommendation from the Planning Commission, but to share with them on Wednesday the discussion that you have here, the general characteristics of the conversations that you have. And then, as I think you know, on Wednesday, March 9th, the council is scheduled to have a final work session and then action to approve the propose, the proposal here. So, I think that's what I have. Carolyn, I think is going to talk a little bit about next steps, and then Teri is going to spend some time talking about public engagement efforts that we've been doing over the last six weeks or so and what we've heard back from the community through that process.
So, as Lisa mentioned, council has their work session on Wednesday, at which time they will approve or maybe with changes this draft proposal. At that time then, it goes out for public comment for about a six-week period. So, they're not finalizing the document at that time, they're finalizing it as a proposal. Then it will have a six-week comment period. We will have a public hearing. Currently, that's scheduled for April 25th, so people can formally weigh in. And then, following that, probably in early May, we would have another council work session to actually finalize the proposal with any changes. In the meantime, we, staff will be doing additional work such as looking at the housing mix and the single-family land need because that isn't yet addressed in this proposal. We'll be working with the Technical Resource Group, which is a subset of the Community Resource Group, which Rick is on, and Randy may be invited to be on, if you so choose.
I'm referring to the invitation.
Let's see, so in addition to that, we'll probably begin looking at potential expansion areas where large lot industrial land and assuming that that gets approved by the city council, assuming they asked us to look at those lands. So, we have a number of kind of parallel tracks we're working on over the next several weeks. And we plan to come back to the city council with a recommendation in May, probably late May, on the single-family land needs, so we'll be coming to you probably earlier May to talk about our findings in that area. So, any questions kind of about next steps before we leap into the proposal?
Okay. Teri?
Okay. So, what I'm going to do is point you to the attachment in your packet that looks like this. It's the summary of changes to the document that have happened since we originally released it on February 2nd, and I'll just use that as a guide to walk through what has changed. And in the first paragraph there, it summarizes what we've been doing with the public to get input on this proposal. You'll recall, we've held a couple of public open houses, the first one at North Eugene High and the second one down at Roosevelt Middle School. We had an online survey on that version, the February 2nd version, and I've got results compiled here, and I'll mention just a few highlights of what people have to say in the survey. Also, we've been getting some comments by email. Of course, you've been holding work sessions with the council. We went to the Sustainability Commission, and they took a good, hard look at the proposal and provided quite a few comments on the climate and energy pillar. There was a triple bottom line analysis workshop on a Saturday that I think some of you attended, and the summary notes of that are attached to your packet. There've been a number of neighborhood meetings, and NLC has discussed the draft proposal. The two meetings that the neighborhood leaders invited staff to come attend were SUNA and Laurel Hill Valley, and Carolyn went to the SUNA meeting with John Reese, and I went to Laurel Hill, so if you have questions about what came out of those two meetings, let each of us know. The biggest comment I got was that folks really wanted to know, in a level of specificity, how the strategies would affect their neighborhood, and understandably, we're not quite there at that level of specificity yet, so did you want to say anything about SUNA?
I think there were some of that same concern. The big message I took away is, we did talk a lot about infill compatibility standards. We talked about the fact that there is a recommendation for a neighborhood planning process for the University Neighborhoods, SUNA and West University, but there's also a lot of concern about how long that's going to take and what do we do in the meantime. So, that this is, you know, the pressing issues is kind of the big takeaway that I had.
We held a meeting with the Historic Review Board, and they provided us some comments on some of the strategies, and several of those have been woven in throughout the document, not just the one strategy we had talking about, historic preservation. And then, as Lisa mentioned earlier, the Community Resource Group has some subgroups that are continuing to meet, so the Technical Resource Group and also the Housing Mix Group. And then, another one was formed for a short-lived meeting to address implementation strategies. Several of you were at that meeting, so that work has been going on over the last month. We also have been gathering input from staff across the organization, so transportation planning, public works, parks, work groups that would be impacted by some of the work laid out in the proposal have been giving staff some comments on those, on the language. The one thing I'm just going to point you to, and I'm going to leave this, you can look at it, this is a printout of all the survey comments and email comments on the draft proposal, and I have these in PDF documents that I can share with you as well. Just one little fun tidbit is that of the people who have taken the online survey, the favorite strategies so far, and that's the ones that they answered yes with no qualifications, do this, the strategies relating to historic preservation, doing neighborhood plans, completing infill compatibility standards, and then promoting urban agriculture. Those are the top favorites, which is kind of cool. Okay, so now on to a summary of what the actual changes are in the document. So, under each pillar, we've just provided a couple of bullets of the main gist of the changes. Some were small language changes to just clarify intent and make it read better, but we did add a map of the existing industrial and commercial lands in this draft, so the map looks like this. It shows general patterns in zoning and gives people an idea of what we're talking about when we say employment lands or commercial lands. And then, also, under the Economic Opportunity pillar, we added a note to clarify that even though we're not proposing UGB expansion for commercial land need, potential expansion areas that are needed for some other land use could include small amounts of commercial land. We're not precluding that by stating that we're not expanding for commercial. Does that make sense to everyone? Okay.
Yeah, glad you did that.
Okay. An important revision to this pillar is under Strategy Six, and based on some work that the economic development, I forgot to mention that one, the economic development subgroup of the CRG has met numerous times since the last proposal came out, and I think you heard a summary of that at the last work session with council. So, based on that work, the proposal now recommends expanding the UGB by between 400 and 500 acres for industrial uses, and as Carolyn mentioned, there's further work that needs to be done to start looking at places, but that's what's being proposed in terms of a number to start studying. On the Affordable Housing pillar?
Can we?
Question?
Absolutely.
Yeah. On number six, Teri, I wonder, for the benefit of the Planning Commission members that haven't been deeply involved in the CRG, the second bullet on number six, can you explain the concept of just-in-time inventory?
I'm glad Jason's here, I'm going to ask him to answer that question. Jason, come to the.
So, the just-in-time inventory refers to something that's not currently available to cities under state law. It is something that was talked about for new legislation this session, I'm not sure if that's going to happen or not, but the statement is in case something like this is introduced in the future, which would be a mechanism by which cities could identify lands outside their UGB for expansion, particularly for industrial uses, not bring them inside, but it would be designed a new process whereby they could be brought in rapidly if a need is identified. So, that would be the concept of adjusted time inventory. As I mentioned, it doesn't, it's not something that's available to us now, but if over the 20-year period it is, this would allow us to avail ourselves in that.
Emily, would you add anything to that?
Just reiterating, it's not available right now under law, but if we identify a need for industrial land, we have to bring it in our urban growth boundary.
Is there anything going on in the legislature that might facilitate that, or is that a future legislative effort?
You know, I'm not sure. Things are moving pretty rapidly right now as far as how the, how bills are shaping up, but there's a lot of energy around economic development and how best to stimulate it. And so, I couldn't tell you exactly right now where that, where this particular concept is, but we are, although it may not sound like it, we're keeping an eye on that ball, and this is just sort of a placeholder in case we have opportunities.
Okay, thank you.
Rick?
Just a couple of things. I know you don't want wordsmith at this point, but I noticed in a couple of places, you talk about we can have some commercial or multifamily expansion outside the UGB if in fact we expand, and you have a couple of places in here that says like, no UGB expansion for commercial lands, you know, needed type of thing, it's just a clarity thing.
And I might be, I'm sorry, it might be just worth responding to that, that in terms of identifying a need to expand to accommodate our commercial land need, that's not included in the proposal. There could be sort of ancillary development as part of the expansion for industrial lands or single-family. We might see multifamily or commercial that as part of some mixed use that could happen, but it's not, it wouldn't be because of our need.
And my point was that that doesn't seem to be clear when you see the little bullet point on the bottom type of thing, particularly after you just changed the way it read in the text, so it's just kind of a, if you want the public to look at. The other thing, when we were in the CRG, we had kind of a long discussion, I remember, now maybe it was in one of my subgroups that didn't go, but we talked about brownfields. Brownfields tend, in my industry, and I think, and I'm going to guess yours too, to mean properties that were already developed that will be redeveloped. This suggests by definition that they're termed polluted or constrained lands, and I would argue that they're not necessarily polluted, that in fact, you could have constrained lands that have never been developed, or they could be polluted and never been used before, so.
I think your understanding is correct, and we need to make sure that that's reflected.
Trent?
I just noticed on the map that was included with this, it has a blue star for key institutions, and the only institution that's recognized is the U of O, not arguing it's not key, but aren't there others, like maybe LCC, or I don't know where to go with that, but.
Yeah, we certainly could add those things on there.
I'm curious why it was included with the industrial, commercial lands.
They're a major employer. I think that was the reason behind including them on this map.
Okay, okay, okay.
But just a note also on anything else you find in the document that maybe you don't think is worth spending a lot of time at this meeting, please do just get it to us in terms of typos or other edits that you think we should make for the document. And I wasn't to say that that was.
We had this conversation earlier.
You gave me that look, I don't have to explain it. Are there other questions on this pillar while Jason's still at the table?
Thanks, Jason.
I guess I'll just throw in under number three, that last bullet point. I thought that was a good rewording of that, so I just wanted to point that out, that was reworded well.
Reduce the obstacles a little. Okay. So, moving on to the Affordable Housing pillar, there weren't a lot of changes to this one. Based in part on the good feedback we got from Housing Policy Board and just a lack of other comments that would cause a lot of changes, we just rewrote to better explain kind of what some of the programs are that we're already doing, and clarifying again that no determination has yet been made for single-family land needs. Housing?
Yeah, number three, the applicability of a housing and transportation affordability index. Can you talk a little bit about how that might be useful to us?
Well, I guess part of it, and there is an official housing affordability, transportation affordability index, and it's a tool to look at, and I think one of the.
There is.
There is a tool, yeah, and we could send you a link to that, just so you could see a little bit more about that. The idea there is that there are hidden costs in transportation that don't get reflected under affordable housing, and so even when you look at residential mortgage approval, the things that banks look at, don't include what your transportation costs are. Now, as gas is climbing back up closer to $4 a gallon, you can start to see how people could spend $200 or $300 a month on gas that perhaps a house could be affordable to them if they lived on public transit, or some places they didn't have to drive as far, or drive until you qualify. So, it's trying to link those two affordability pieces that aren't current.
I understand that. Once you have that, then what do you do with it? Once you show that a particular part of town is more or less affordable?
Well, I think in some ways, it's just sort of like highlighting for people who maybe haven't made those linkages. Sometimes, I mean, I think even, and this has been a dynamic that's happened in other parts of the country, where people make choices thinking that they're actually choosing a more affordable place to live because the mortgage is less, but they had a hidden cost of transportation. So, I think it's just, part of it's just a public awareness of that dynamic, and I'm linking those two pieces.
And the strategy is really about that question that you're asking, what would the utility of this be? How might we apply that? So, kind of asking ourselves those questions.
And then, just again, just on the grammar, the last sentence talks about, in addition, explore the availability of an index that includes housing utility costs. Is it really searching for the availability of one or the applicability of one?
I think it's both.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know specifically of a tool that includes the utility piece, but.
I think one might be an energy performance score, certainly related to new houses, that's something that's becoming more and more.
So then, applicable is more.
Is more.
Yeah. And that's one that I'll say thank you for including because I think that was one I suggested, because utility costs, as we do sustainable building and more energy efficient building, relates primarily to newer construction, but then you've got lower utility costs, which then makes that ultimately more affordable.
And more valuable.
And more valuable.
Right.
A couple of things.
On the front graph, we used Vermont Square Row Houses and Tate Contominions. That sort of lends itself to fairly higher income level housing. And the one thing that I kind of, when I went through this, the way it's written, is it talks about providing affordable housing for all incomes, like statewide, but then there's a couple of bullet points in here that sort of lean to affordability being the other way we define affordability, that's for people of lower income and so on, and I found that to be a little bit mixed between the two. It's like, which affordability are we talking about here? And I don't know how you get to that because it's a mix of terms, it's the way the state does it and so on. The other thing on the housing affordability, you have a little square, I think it's important that when we use terms like this, that we remember that in situations, you just talked about utility costs, that a lot of rental income paid includes a lot of utilities, where a lot of single-family housing does not include a lot of those costs, so the measurements are not, you know, apples to apples, and so if they're not, people don't recognize that some can include it. Now, that's changing because we're seeing most multifamily go to where the tenant's paying for most of their own utility costs. The other one I would ask somehow maybe under, on the strategy four, the first one, where we continually exist, continue existing programs such as low-income housing and so on, I think those are good to continue, but I would ask that we at some point sort of analyze the effectiveness of those programs and are we really getting sort of our bang for our buck? I'm sort of a believer that land bank programs are actually the opposite of what a lot of people believe. I think they actually create more costs in creating land than this idea that it's cheaper now than it is later, and I'd like to chat about that with people sometime.
I'll mark that one for follow-up with Stephanie maybe.
Jeff?
I guess I'm a little concerned about Strategy Six in this area, where we open section by saying, we will undertake the following strategies, and then for six, we say a determination to expand UGB to be single-family has not yet been made. And this hasn't been troubling to me up to now, but now we're going to public comment. It seems like we're going to public comment without saying anything here, and I'm wondering what your thoughts are on that.
Well, as part of the next steps, we will be developing a recommendation around that, and then we would certainly offer a public comment period for that recommendation. We won't kind of blow by that and say, we've already had our hearing, but we will have the hearing and finalize kind of what we do know, and then as we continue to develop additional recommendations, we will provide comment in a public hearing for those items as well. Does that get at your question?
Yeah, it does, Karen. What do you think the timing is before this additional determination is made?
Well, we're shooting for May for a recommendation to city council, and I'd probably say late May, and so then, I don't know exactly what the comment period will be after that or when the hearing will be, but we would definitely allow a reasonable period to comment because that's an important piece of this discussion, we can't gloss over it.
Thank you.
Teri?
Any more on housing? Okay. So, the next pillar is planning for climate change and energy uncertainty. First thing we did was add the word change in the title to clarify that we're not contesting that the climate seems to be changing, so that has a new title. And the strategies here reflect a reordering and reworking, so the numbers are different from the last version that we put out. A couple of the strategies where it kind of collapsed, and then the prioritization was made cleaner. So, now we start with a strategy that says plan for growth in a way that supports, you know, efficiency and 20-minute living, and then it goes on to prioritizing energy efficiency in terms of buildings and vehicles, and the wording used here, recommended by this Sustainability Commission, is as the first line of action, reducing energy dependence and greenhouse gas emissions. When you get to the end of that strategy, it talks about facilitating the use and generation of renewable energy for buildings and transportation, and that would be sort of the second line of action after maximizing our efficiency. Does that make sense?
I just, can you expand a little bit, Teri, on what their thinking is there on that last bullet for use and generation?
So, it's first getting our community, but we know that buildings use a lot of energy, and we know the transportation sector uses a lot of energy. So, making the systems that we have and the new buildings that we're building as energy efficient as possible was the recommendation, that we do that first and take all actions that we can to maximize our efficiency. And then, this one sort of implies for buildings, as a part of redevelopment, energy generation focusing on renewables after we maximize efficiency, then also look at the source of the energy and promote more use of renewable forms like solar, wind, biomass, and those sorts of things. And we didn't outline those, but under the category of renewable energy, the thought was the city could encourage the use of those forms of renewable energy, especially through the process of redevelopment. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
John?
So, we could anticipate another look at our, for example, solar access standards as we move forward?
Yeah, that's not specifically called out here, and it may be something you want to discuss. We've got public comment from one individual who's been asking for that, but it's not been called out as a specific proposal, and really, no other specific code amendments have been called out here. These are more about promoting certain kinds of programs or following up on our green building strategies that are already in place.
I'm just struck by the potential conflict between increasing compact urban growth and having accessibility for solar at the same time.
Yeah.
I guess one other thing that I would offer, the Sustainability Commission is the essential voice on this, of course, but one of the things that I see as a challenge is trying to get a volume and quality of retrofits done that I think will need to be done over the next 20 years. I think we're really looking at a challenge to go back to the existing building stock and make sure we've got that, and so, you know, we talk in other areas about incentives and programs, and I think that in the end, that's what it'll take, and a lot of concerted effort to make that happen. You know, there is some of that at the state level, and there may be some at the city level, but I think that over time, that's going to, that's going to loom very large and require a lot of effort.
If we can also just speak loudly so our audience can hear.
Yes, thank you, Carolyn. Sit up to the table, Jeff.
Randy?
In the description of 20-minute neighborhoods, isn't proximity to transit an important consideration? That's missing.
Proximity to a transit stop.
Yeah, tax walker, where neighborhoods well-connected with streets, sidewalks, and paths, but nothing about transit.
Thanks.
That's why we're here.
So, moving, still on the climate pillar, the third strategy now is the one that talks about preparing for and trying to reduce physical and economic risks to people and property that are likely to occur as a result of climate change and energy price volatility. So, that one is sort of the downer strategy, it talks about preparing for increased flooding and increased wildfire and real things that take some planning and coordinating with other agencies as we look at redevelopment and new places for development with those things in mind. But urban agriculture's in that one, folded in. And then, the last one talks, is really the cost strategy, okay? It's kind of one.
No, I really feel guilty. I just wanted to point out that your one, two, three, and four here are almost impossible to see. You might want to change the color.
The number of colors. They're too light. Okay.
Terribly important. Trying to have very little impact.
Okay, so the last strategy just gets at the intent of trying to align the city's public investments, incentives, costs, and processes to support the first three strategies and the goals under this pillar. So, that's where you find the tactic to complete an assessment of our incentives, including this idea of variable systems development charges, either varying them by the size of the structure that's being. of the structure that's being proposed or by its location. And both of those are proposed to be looked at under this one.
Rick?
I think just to sort of follow up a little bit with what Jeff was talking about, it'd be nice, I think, to sort of strengthen this idea of not only smaller housing and what we're doing from here on out, but a little bit more about what we can do to do retrofits and sort of what you led to before. But, you know, it'd be nice to see if we actually had some active public policies that supported a lot of good retrofitting for, you know, realizing climate change is coming. I should say is here. Coming more.
Ready to move on to compact urban development? Okay, and efficient transportation options. So on this one, there's another map added to this pillar. And welcome your comments on that. Just trying to get at where those key transit corridors and core commercial areas are in the city. We added a similar note at the beginning of this pillar. That is that this proposal doesn't propose UGB expansion for either commercial or multifamily. And since this pillar talks about both of those kind of mixed use, this note says, again, if potential expansion were proposed, this doesn't preclude small areas of commercial or multifamily. So tweaks it a little to fit with this mixed-use concept.
I think that's good, gives you some latitude.
Work yet to be done. Another thing I'd call out on this one is that under strategy three, protect adjacent neighborhoods, this is about transition areas. We just reworked this wording a little bit and added some examples of the kinds of tools that we can use in transition areas, such as building height, step downs, traffic calming, and landscaping. Those are some of the examples that were suggested to us. And there's a box here describing the West Eugene Collaborative Work and sort of the example that they set for looking at how these issues interact in a specific area of town. Then also, this is where we show what's going on in the South Walnut area, where we've got some pilot work going on and workshops coming up. We'll tell you about that soon, I'm sure. Comments about?
We have a few. John?
First of all, back to that question about the one star around the University of Oregon in the first graphic. You have a star here at downtown, which first of all is not in the key. Sorry, my old map-making stuff. And second of all, it could be also a star in that first map, I suspect, since it is also an employment center.
And we, what we are trying to do there is throughout this entire pillar, we talk about key transit corridors and core commercial areas. We wanted to be sure that people understood downtown is a part of a core, is a core commercial area, because we don't call downtown out whenever we say core commercial areas, core commercial areas. So that was kind of our attempt to
I see.
To show people that, you know, that is, when we talk about downtown or when we talk about core commercial areas, that includes downtown.
I always had assumed it did whenever you use core commercial areas.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that being there.
It does, it does.
Yeah, that's fine.
I do question what your criteria were for determining key transit corridors and, you know, where I'm headed with this. But my concern is that, again, whenever you identify something, you disidentify the things you're not identifying. So I'm just curious, what criteria, did you use some document or process to determine what was the key corridor?
The highlighted areas on the map, of course, also on the map, I'm not sure how readable it is.
I think I can see them.
Is, are the planned BRT corridors.
Okay, thank you.
And so it does correspond to those.
Okay, I'm comfortable with that.
So I think it's key high-capacity transit corridors.
Yes.
That's the transit planner. Said former transit, former transit planner.
Although it seems like it's highlighted sixth and seventh, and it doesn't look like 13th is highlighted, is that still?
You know, the reason.
I mean, I know that's under debate.
That's an oversight.
No, no, it's actually not. We went back.
I didn't know if that was a commentary or not.
When we're talking about this pillar, we're talking about commercial transit corridors that also interface with commercially zoned land. And that section of 13th is not commercially zoned.
Right.
So that's why, because we're using this map specific to this pillar, we left it off. But I can see where that could be confusing, so.
Well, I just think with current events, it might.
We're not making a subliminal transit alignment choice.
Okay.
Want to be clear about that.
Good.
Randy?
First, thanks for amplifying number three, changing the wording on that and providing some specific examples of how that transition is going to be affected in neighborhood areas. Really important. Couple of other comments, though. The block that describes area planning, you know, as I read that, area means a lot of different things. And at first I was thinking regional, and then I thought, whoa, I got confused. I'm wondering if we shouldn't say neighborhood or community or something that better describes the general concept of area. I don't know if that's the SNAPs or whatever is being thought of there, but I might consider that differently. And then on number four, we just don't often use words that make things easier. And was that a deliberate choice of words or might we use something like facilitate or create a word incentivize to begin the strategy rather than make, end up with the word easier?
I think we're trying to use accessible language and just make it as simple as possible as part of that. I see your point, but, I mean, you could, you could talk about incentivize, but some people say, well, what does that mean? I think it's just trying to remove those barriers and actually make it easier, facilitate it. So I think we're just trying to state it in simple terms.
Get away from planner, I think.
Yeah, we try.
All right, all right, well. And then, I need help with this because I wondered about it from the first time I saw it. And number four, that first bullet talks about identify and remove regulatory barriers. And the first example is reduce parking requirements. Does that mean remove reduced parking requirements or reduce parking requirements further? It's just.
It's not clear.
Like a double negative.
Yeah. Okay, I can clarify that.
Which one is it that we do mean?
I believe it means that we would, in some situations, reduce parking requirements further or provide an option, an opportunity for that. And I guess the example I would use, I'm a little foggy on the details, but in Walnut Station, we believe we provided an opportunity to reduce parking requirements. So if a business didn't feel they needed as many, they could, they could reduce it. And we were able to do that in Walnut Station because there are a number of kind of parking strategies in that area around the arena that kind of helped protect the neighborhood from potential consequences of reducing those impacts, so.
There's another, another example closer to home is the Peace Health, the former Sacred Heart Downtown site over at Olive and 12th. And there are parking requirements, so the VA hospital looking at that, there's a potential barrier to them and having to provide so much surface parking. It's right next to LTD MX lines, and so there's questions about are there parking requirements that are counterintuitive and provide barriers, actually create more barriers?
The other side of the coin is though, in the university area, when we were looking at denser housing, didn't we go the opposite direction and reduce the reduction capabilities that developers had? I mean, a little.
Yes.
So, see, that's where I get confused in this thing.
I think, yeah, it would have to be done carefully and thoughtfully.
Well, this strategy is talking about the key commercial areas and transit corridors. So
Okay.
The implementation of reducing parking requirements would be in those kinds of areas where we can have the transit station, we can have a parking management district or whatever the tools are, public parking lots.
Well, just clarify the debate a little bit, will you?
Do you mean parking minimums there?
Well, they can reword that.
Parking options.
Shared parking. And then if I can, just one more comment on the second bullet, complete a feasibility study for the formation of a compact urban development district. Might there be more than one?
Mm-hmm.
So district or parentheses S to pluralize it?
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Rick?
Back to number two. Always happy to see that we're talking about area slash neighborhood, whatever we might ultimately call those plans. Later in implementation, unfortunately, we talk about possibly up to 35 years to get them done, which it'd be nice to figure out a way to shortcut that a little bit. And then it would be, how do you prioritize who gets to go first, second, and so on? In number three, if I read number three, it says protect adjacent neighborhoods, provide housing options by using transit between, I think it's quote, "commercial and high-density residential and low-density single-family," versus it reads transition between commercial and high-density residential uses and low-density single-family neighborhoods. It's sort of like, are we transitioning between everything? And I think what it is, is between commercial, high-density, and
Right.
Single-family.
Okay.
And then the last little bullet point underneath that one, the form-based codes review, design review and things sound like, to me, good implementation tools, but I guess maybe it's because I've been around overlays that they tend to be adding another layer, and that's not simplifying when we add more layers of things, it doesn't seem like.
I agree. We heard that comment before and I talked about it. We talked about that a little bit and said, agree that a lot of our past overlays have made things more complicated, but it is a tool that can actually help streamline. So there is hope for that tool if we apply it differently than we have in the past.
I remember you said that. Repeat the next one.
Okay.
Thanks.
I have myself in the queue and everybody's already taken what I was going to say, but one thing nobody did say yet, so I'll just throw this out even though it's minor, is instead of ending on easier, I think it should actually be associated with make and then you end with a more plaineristic sentence that makes it easier.
Put it between development and within.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So moving on to protect, repair, and enhance neighborhood livability. The most significant thing that was changed in this pillar is that proposed timelines were added to several of the tasks based on some feedback from some neighborhood groups and from people who have been involved in ICS and opportunity citing. We'd really like to see those things be completed. So we have some proposed timelines included within the strategies themselves. Strategy five, which is the one about historic preservation, was strengthened. And I think I mentioned earlier that several of the other strategies actually have some reference now to historic and cultural resources and adaptive reuse. So that's a key element of redevelopment, and it was missing before. We've strengthened that. One thing that's gone from strategy three about opportunity citing is the sentence that was misleading, that said that opportunity sites could be located anywhere in a neighborhood. And I think that caused people a lot of grief and understandably so, because certainly they wouldn't go anywhere. There would be a process, there would be criteria, and we've developed a good amount of that information to date. So that sentence is gone.
Well done.
So any comments on that pillar?
I have some. A few. On five, nice reworking of that. I wonder if promoting recognition and promoting consideration are maybe not really strong enough, and so I wonder if we could just start with the recognize the value and consider adaptive reuse.
If people could keep speaking out there, would you agree?
Just a couple of comments on number one. When you reworded the first part of that, I think where it says allowed by existing regulations, comma, or undertake new strategies is a little confusing. And I think maybe instead of or, if you said nor will we undertake new strategies, might be better wording? I think that's a little clearer.
Yeah.
And then another comment on the graphic for the slope setback concept. Good graphic, thank you.
That's the whole comment?
No, I didn't, that's the whole comment.
Good.
You know my thoughts on slope setbacks.
Randy?
I like them.
Okay.
On the box that describes what opportunity citing is, it says to encourage development on sites. Shouldn't that be to encourage higher-density residential development on sites?
More specific.
I'm just thinking back to July 2005, when the city council gave us the charge to create opportunity citing. And over the course of six years, we, I don't want to lose sight of what the goal was. And hopefully we'll have it in place.
John?
Well, I hesitate to argue with the architects, but I had problems with the graphic. And what it looked to be like was you had laid the building down on the lot. So what I would suggest you do is first of all, remove the horizontal lines that have no purpose. And then secondly, on your interior yard property lines, rather than have a dash line, have an arrow point to the ground. And then I think it'll be clear that you're looking, plan you not looking down on it.
Some conception, Brown came up to the building.
Well, that's, that's what I got out of it. So I think those two minor changes might make it clearer for some folks.
Clean it up.
Thanks, good point.
Rick?
One of the things that's not in here that I would like to see, and I think it has to do with neighborhood livability, we have two neighborhood areas that are incredibly large, and it's very difficult for them to function as neighborhoods, Cal Young and Bethel. And it would be really helpful if part of the strategy, which I think would help protect, prepare, and enhance neighborhood livability is, part of the process would be to help those neighborhoods actually get into smaller neighborhood groups so they can be as effective as a lot of the other smaller neighborhood groups are, because right now, it's just impossible to be when you're representing 20,000 people in one neighborhood.
Do you have a suggestion for where that would go somewhere?
I don't know. A new strategy? It just kind of goes along with you talking about plans. And, I mean, I think if you went to the Cal Young area and tried to come up with a single plan for the Cal Young neighborhood group, doing it in a year or two would be impossible because you've probably got a dozen different neighborhoods over there at least. But even if you could break them into three or four.
In some ways, the area planning concept allows you to look at a smaller area within a neighborhood. It's not really bound to be specific, so.
Yeah, I agree, yeah. But again, with so many of these plans, I would bet are going to sort of come from neighborhood groups and neighborhood organizations. So how do you create an area plan if you have no association that really has been established to start to deal with a smaller area?
Some of the SNAP projects are doing that. There's one on Flair Boulevard that's working with Latino businesses, so that's a section of Whittaker and JWN. The other one that's getting underway is River Road and Santa Clara partnering together, so it's even bigger than one neighborhood. But I think.
But it's over specific annexation, right?
Yeah, specific issues, but maybe there's a way we can include a bullet that talks about working with neighborhood services specifically, because I know that that's part of their work plan.
It is.
Is to work with neighborhood associations on the sites. So I think.
And I know we're slowly starting over Cal Young.
Yeah, okay.
Bill?
That could be all we did as far as this.
Just a quick comment.
That's all I ask.
In the past, we've done the Willackenzi Plan, I think there's a 19th and Agate Plan and so forth that are subsets of neighborhood associations. So I understand your concern about the size of some of the neighborhoods, but I'm not sure this is the place to put it.
John, I think folks are still having a hard time hearing you.
Okay. I just mentioned that there are currently neighborhood plans that don't encompass the whole neighborhood association, so it is possible.
So natural resource pillar is the next one that we're dealing with here. First of all, under the description of the pillar itself, before you get to the strategies, we added a sentence about how important our natural environment is to our livability, made that connection. And then the other notable changes under strategy two, a couple of types of resources were added to the list to protect and restore, specifically added high-quality coniferous forests and Amazon Creek, and clarified the reference to the Walnut River, because before it talks about the confluence, but not the river itself. So that was done. That's it. We have to move on to implementation. We have to move on to implementation then.
Just a small comment. This is another font color that tends to disappear as well.
Which one?
The numbers here also are hard to read. Not as hard as the other, but close.
You might as well tell them about the blue ones.
I don't have trouble with the blue ones. You know, you need to think about the fact that color blindness can have effect on readability of documents.
Yeah. Thanks. Under this last pillar, adaptable, flexible and collaborative implementation, there wasn't a lot done to change the language here. We just clarified a little bit under strategy one, which data we would begin collecting and what proposals should be monitored, or what assumptions should be monitored. This work is really central to the work that the technical resource group is going to be doing over the next who knows how long, but designing that process, so that work is definitely ongoing. I think that's it.
Just a weird comment. This was presented to council at the end of the meeting, and we didn't really have a chance to comment, but I think this is key to our success in the long run. This pillar.
On that same note, I caught the last few minutes of that, and Consulate Clark seemed to be somewhat confused between the five-year and the 10-year plan. Did this try to fix that a little bit, or is this the way it was originally presented to him?
That's the same.
Yep.
Okay, because it was my understanding, the way he read it, he felt that it just meant that we went and looked at it in five years, we didn't really do anything about it in 10 years we did. And I think the intent of it, when I was on it, was we can do it at any time, we just want some minimal sort of stop, stuff, stuff, give it a bit of some things done, pay attention to what's going on.
Ben?
As I was reading this, the thought entered my mind, how does this relate then to the metro plan? Is it an amendment? Is it a standalone document?
Wake up.
Those are questions that will probably come to you to talk about. We, staff that is, including myself, are really looking at the best use of the metro plan. You know, I don't think there's any question the metro plan will live on, but so much of what we're doing right now is specific to Eugene, and Springfield is doing the same thing, and so there certainly will be significant changes to the metro plan. The Envision Eugene pillars and strategies are likely to be encompassed in Eugene-specific plan that operates like a local comprehensive plan with the metro plan just being the place where we house our regional planning provisions. So obviously, that's a next step to be looked at and one to be looked at pretty quickly.
Yeah, well, that's when we started this process some time ago, and we're talking about, you know, accommodating growth. What's evolved, not unexpectedly, is that the strategies affect implementation measures and policies that affect inside the urban growth boundary already, not just in an area that might be beyond that. So does that mean we'll need to go back and evaluate the policies as they exist? If there are conflicts that this causes, how do we adjust that? Does it become, can't be a refinement plan, because the metro plan in that case, according to what we know today, the metro plan takes precedence, so how does this? Well, a lot of questions for you.
There's such comprehensive and important planning going on that I think that, you know, what I'm, the direction that I'm hearing in my office is that we want to come out of this with a really good set of workable plans. And it does seem like the right time, and I think that we are going to be looking at the metro plan to ensure that we don't end up with conflicts between the Envision Eugene planning and what is in our current metro plan. So that, you know, at this point, the council's being asked to adopt these pillars and strategies as direction to staff for basically what we end up taking through a formal process.
Yeah.
And it's during that formal process that metro plan policies and things like that will come back for your review.
Yeah, because it calls into question the current growth management policies as well, and how these adjust stats. There's a lot of pieces that need to be glued together somehow.
Yep. We're aware that we've only just begun the process.
Ever done by June?
John?
February. Last February. Which raises the question, 3337 also split Eugene and Springfield, so how does that affect the metro plan? Does it not need to have a major rewrite?
Yeah, that would mean, we could have taken House Bill 3337 and said, okay, we're going to do the minimum we need to do to satisfy what that bill required, which would have been a change to our diagram to show a new urban growth boundary, a real hard look at our housing, and arguably, we could have argued about what more was required beyond that. Those were the things that were absolutely required. You know, there was a policy choice made by this jurisdiction that we were going to take a bigger look, so, you know, the fact that we have, I guess, the need to really take a much broader look at our whole metro plan and the policies and probably some substantial changes. But 3337, at the very least, will require a metro plan diagram change to show that urban growth boundary dividing the two jurisdictions, and some policy and language changes to those, to the text that talks about us having a regional urban growth boundary. And Springfield is approaching all this a little bit differently than Eugene is, and so we are, you know, going to have to be on, make sure that we stay pace with them to the extent we're not holding them back, if that's important to us. And from what I understand, it is important that we support them as they move forward too. So you may be seeing some of those changes to the metro plan before we're actually through Envision Eugene.
The other can of worms I'd like to raise, and maybe it's not one at all, is that I know 30% of Calhoun and 70% of River Road neighborhood associations are inside the urban growth boundary but are county properties. Does changing our urban growth boundary necessitate us looking at those, or can they stay in their same status and not be affected?
They can change, they can stay in their same status and not be affected, but again, we are taking such a large look at, at planning for the future for the next 20 years that I'd be surprised if, you know, at some point, that isn't something that you look at.
Well, there is a pillar that calls for doing a study. I was just wondering if we were mandated to make any changes.
No.
Thank you.
Other comments from commissioners?
I was just thinking, and I don't know how feasible it is, but under protect and restore and enhance natural resources, the part about farmland outside of the UGV, it might be useful, and in some of the other places too, to identify for public, you know, future public comment periods and public hearings and so forth, but criteria we might be using to establish.
Oh, good point.
You know, because I think it might put a lot of questions to bed.
Do you mean the criteria that we use to like identify what is valuable?
One more valuable piece of farmland than another, because I'm sure everybody's going to want to argue that they're, they're, they're just the best, and so. And there will be the argument that the criteria is not strong enough.
Other comments from commissioners?
Good job.
Yeah, thank you very much. It's, I know it's a culmination of a lot of staff hours and volunteer hours to put this together, and it looks really nice, graphically rich.
Bill, that's all.
I think it would be great to hear sort of general comments. We've heard as we walked through in the joint work session, some specific comments and questions on each of the pillars, and then Terry just walked you through what changes were made. I think we talked about some general things, but in terms of my being able to characterize sort of the planning commission's overall discussion or thoughts on the proposal, it would be good to have some general dialogue or comments from you, if you're, to the extent that you have and are interested in making some.
Since I've been involved in this process quite a bit through the CRG and some of the subcommittees and planning commission for a number of years and things like that, I was, when John first presented this at one of the CRG meetings, I was very impressed with the approach it takes. I think it's more encompassing, which I was happy to see. It allows for not only a little longer-term planning process than the 20 years, but it also allows us the specifics we need to do for the next 20 under state law. I think that there's a lot of detail work that still has to come, but I'm happy to see that it's being framed this way. I think it's going to be reasonably easier to move ahead with all the parts and pieces because we've sort of got the pillars and strategies in place, and they seem to be, in my mind, fairly all-encompassing. I keep trying, as I read this, to say, what do I believe is missing in this sort of Envision document? And I don't really see anything in my own mind that there's a lot missing at this point, but again, I know there's a whole lot of detail work ahead of us, and I'm sure that's where it really falls in. But I think the approach, I think the way it's being explained and laid out is, can be well-received and supported, so I'm happy with the way we're going with this.
Great, thanks. Bill?
I think what I appreciate the most about it is the fact that it recognizes the interrelationships and the overlaps, and I think so often we try and go in that linear fashion, and it just doesn't work, because everything does relate to everything else. And I think taking the approach of the pillars and really specifically saying how these relate to each other is really good, because then we can understand that, you know, climate change and transportation and how that affects affordable housing and all those different aspects, and really, I think, get a grasp of that. I know that makes it incredibly more difficult to assemble, and so I recognize that, and I think you've done a really good job of weaving that all together, so kudos for that.
John?
My hope is, when we originally started this, we would create a vision first and then grow from there. We've sort of turned this upside down, and we started by collecting data, analyzing it, and now we're at the vision stage. And actually, I don't think that's a bad idea, but I think it does create some concern from certain folks that we're looking at a vision, not concrete plans, and I guess what I would encourage people to do, which is what I've come to, is there's so much good about this that I'm comfortable that we're at the vision stage, and I'm willing to wait to see how the details come out, because I think this can grow to be an even better product, but it's a little bit out of order, and I think that might create some consternation for some folks. I just hope they can trust the process.
To the extent that the people who participated in the CRG can be considered representative of a wide variety of perspectives in this community, and the amount of information that they shared during that multitude of hours and days that they spent together commenting on these different issues, I think the work that the staff did, analyzing and synthesizing that multitude of stuff, was very well done, and gives us a basis that if the general public could gain appreciation for the thoughtfulness and the dialogue that occurred during that process, if the general public could have an appreciation for that, I would hope that this helps us take this forward in a much more civil, respectable, easier way of getting this plan through the process than has happened historically in this community. So it's a great effort.
Jeff?
I guess I'd first like to compliment staff on keeping this process going, keeping this process going. But I guess I also want to mention a concern I have, and it's kind of developing over time. I'm a little concerned we may be creating, for the public comment period, something of an us-versus-them confrontation between single-family slash residential and commercial slash multifamily. And I can picture in my own mind, perhaps pessimistically, I hope, two camps developing. When in point in fact, you know, we say there's no growth for commercial or multifamily, and if you look at the history of what's happening with properties and what's going to happen with properties, so take the Rexius property as an example, growth does come from industrial, and those things have grown, yet we somehow, now we've packaged this to say, okay, those multifamily isn't growing, commercial isn't growing, even though they have and will, but we're only going to expand the urban growth boundary for single-family, residential and industrial. And I think that it's a, the way we're structuring this, to me, it's kind of a, it's being structured for a political conflict, potentially. I think it's just a concern I have, that the way we're saying this, well, we're only growing the urban boundary for single-family and industrial, and I think it's like saying, well, he's turned 16, but we're only going to buy him new shoes, okay? Because the shoes, the community has grown, a lot of things have changed, a lot of industrial has become and will become commercial and residential, and we need to have industrial. I mean, that's one of the things I've been a proponent of. So I have that concern about the way we're couching or constructing the conversation that's going to occur during the public comment.
Lisa?
Yeah, I think that comments Commissioner Mills has made are, I mean, it seems to be with this email from Stephen Lorraine Hunt, seemed to be kind of proving that point that this could be building, you know, conflict in the community. I'm wondering how we addressed their concerns, or if we have addressed their concerns, or if we're going to.
Well, yeah, just because I passed this out right before you got to the meeting, this email just came in this morning, and the issues that are laid out by these neighbors in the Santa Clara area, staff in the community development and also enforcement divisions have been aware of these issues for the last couple of months, and have been working with both homeowners and the managers of the property, but it's one of those things, I mean, it's neighbor issues that have come up a couple of times.
What neighborhood is this, do you know?
It's Santa Clara.
Santa Clara?
Yeah.
And another, is this, having these two types of housing together, is it just area-specific, or is it just public everywhere? All neighborhoods?
No, I don't have enough details to generalize from this one complaint, but I did have a chat with our community development staff that managed the affordable housing financing programs about this, and we talked about the, first of all, the programs we have in place to sort of manage our distribution of monies to these programs, and then the ongoing relationship we have with the management companies. So it's an ongoing thing, and this is not a common complaint, certainly, I don't know if you as a body have received this kind of a complaint before. There are other avenues, I guess is what I'm trying to say, that are in place and that are pretty actively being pursued to resolve these kinds of neighborhood conflicts and tenant neighbor kinds of conflicts.
Just on the surface, reading it quickly, I see similarities with student housing issues in the university area.
Or Panhandle lots. I take it so.
I think whenever you open up a public process, there are people who have, need an avenue to express their concerns and will make that connection and make it an editorial comment. It seems to be the Tea Party is going after MX because they see it as a representational issue. How that affects the desirability of including MX there is another question. Here's a person who's upset about a neighbor that's causing the problems, and we're talking about multifamily housing, so here's an opportunity to raise a concern, is what I see. Not that their concerns may not be totally legitimate, but I think there are better avenues to resolve the conflict.
My thoughts on the plan is I'm, like, feel really appreciative of the opportunity this project has given us to really look at the interconnections of a lot of different pieces of how we plan for growth in the future, and, you know, I've enjoyed the opportunity to collaborate with other commissions and developing this work and other commissioners through different sorts of processes that integrate our different specialities together along with the public process too. Particularly, I really appreciate the emphasis on the connection. Particularly, I really appreciate the emphasis on the connection between land use and transportation, and how much those two pieces rely on one another. And in listening to the conversations at City Council, also, I, it seems really fundamental to me that if we want to develop along transit corridors, we really do need a supportive voice for our transit corridors, and so I'm glad that reference to our plan, the MX line, is actually in the proposal, that it seems really essential to me in what we're proposing for the future. And lastly, I, you know, I'm very appreciative of the presence of social and economic elements in the plan, and that they're peppered throughout, so it, to me, the document has, you know, a much more sustainable, if you will, however, defining that with our three legs, it feels much more sustainable throughout by having that, having that included in all parts. Excellent work.
Just want to take a minute, maybe, I appreciate the comments about the staff work that's done on it, and I know you're aware of this, but we have a fantastic team of staff that have been working on this, and a number of them are in first couple of rows here, and it really has been a tremendous effort. I also want to, I guess, call out Robyn's really amazing graphic work in pulling this together, because it was just a bunch of words on a page before, and so that's such a key in terms of making, we said from the beginning, we wanted to make a very accessible plan, and certainly, any additional feedback you want to give us over the next few weeks would be welcome along those lines, but I just wanted to make sure that, calling out the great staff work of my team, it's been amazing.
So, given all the comments I made about font colors and... I do agree, Robyn.
No further comments on that? We move on to... Oh, Lisa?
Well, given we are talking about growth, I mean, I think it's this beautiful package here, it's really well done, but I think we're talking about putting more buildings up, and, you know, all we see here are birds and, you know, flowers and grasses. I think you need to have some buildings in there, just to make it look like we're talking about reality.
It's so dreamy.
What's that?
But it's so dreamy.
Oh, yeah, well...
Not on the cover.
Not on the cover. I mean, silhouette, you know, cityscape or something, I don't know. It's beautiful, though, I like it the way it is, actually.
The document or the community scape?
Uh, the document.
All right. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, items from commission and staff? Staff items?
I don't have any other items.
We haven't been doing anything else, so...
Oh, yeah, actually, thank you, good point. I did have one thing, just, I think most of you are, you may be aware that there's an ongoing board and commission recruitment period that's happening at the city for all the boards and commissions, and we have two positions that are open on our planning commission that I believe both folks are aware, coming up, so encouraging you to reply. But there's, we're doing very active, we have in the past, I'd say maybe the past two years, really stepped up our board and commission recruitment to try to have as diverse of a representation on all the citywide boards and commissions as possible. So that's ongoing. If you have any questions, let me know. One of the things that happens periodically is when folks call and want to know more about it, I often refer them to the commission itself, because I think you're on a much better position to tell somebody what it's like to serve on this. So, you know, you may get phone calls from folks.
Two positions?
There's two. So Commissioner Randall was appointed to a one-year position.
Oh, okay. They weren't sure about him.
You may recall Ann Nealon left her term midterm, so that was the remainder term, and then Commissioner Duncan's term was up as well.
So if you have any questions about this, you can ask us.
Anything else, Carolyn or Terry?
Can I plug the city club?
Sure.
Okay, so March 18th, there's going to be a city club program on Envision Eugene. Randy's going to be a panelist, and Carolyn's going to talk, Lisa's going to introduce some other people that have been working with us on the CRG, so should be good. We'll talk about the actual draft proposal.
So I mentioned an email to you that I'm going to be leaving on the 16th of March and returning on the 3rd of May. Do I need to ask permission to be excused?
Yes.
I'm asking permission to be excused.
No.
No.
It would be ideal if actually the commission did take a quick vote on that, that you would approve that request.
Are there any other commissioners who are planning to take extended periods of time away at that same time?
Well, not that same time, no.
I move to allow John to take his time off.
Second.
Is that in favor? Are they closed?
We notify them, but you, that's how we panel the last two, and it seems to have worked fine.
Any other items from commissioners? I think it's nice to see you all again, just in this body. It's good to have that face time, even though it was great to work with our buddies. Nice to see you all, too. Okay, with that, we are adjourned.